We're good.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, at six thirty on September sixth, twenty twenty-three. I am opening the Board of Selectmen meeting. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and on our local cable station. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we will have a vote for a public meeting to start at six thirty. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Yeah, so made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six thirty, public hearing, Southern Comfort Restaurant, three twenty West Center Street. This is for a violation of the town's alcohol policy and MGL Chapter one thirty-eight, Section seventy-seven.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Is there anybody here from Southern Comfort or representing Southern Comfort this evening? All right. So with that said, before the board is the fact that they do have a liquor license with the board. Sometime in February, we started to recognize that they were not open. We had multiple conversations with them throughout the summer, in which time they told us that they were making every effort to reopen. And after mid-June, they became non-responsive to the staff. As a result of that, we have sent our liquor enforcement officer Sergeant Reagan to also do an investigation, and he found them to be closed as well. The staff again made good faith efforts to continue to be in touch with them, and they have been non-responsive to the staff. This is not their first time that they have been in violation of our liquor license, and they've only held it for a little over two years. So Christine, if we could go back to the first highlighted area. There we go. So they're entitled, anybody that we, that the staff believes requires a hearing, they are entitled to receive notice. They received notice from us on both August sixteenth and on August twenty-eighth. They have been responsive, unresponsive to both. Next page. Again, this is your liquor license. We have, your, this board has determined that we're going to create both non-aggregious and egregious incidences, and we defined as to what they both are. You could see under egregious incidences is that anything that consistently happens within a sixty-month period of time of five years, that it will call for progressive discipline. It also says that any authorized closure beyond two consecutive weeks without any type of sufficient grounds and/or notice to the board was also going to commence revocation proceedings, which is what is before you this evening. One of the incidents that we do identify as egregious, as I said earlier, is unauthorized extended closure of license on premise. And again, I would think that since February would certainly fall within that definition. So that we've required them to appear before the board this evening. Again, we've made multiple attempts. They've been non-responsive. Next page. So all action in reference to a revocation of their license will require a minimum of a two-day suspension. In... Uh, are you from Southern Comfort? Okay, so we have just started the hearing. So, so would you prefer me to start from the beginning so that way?
Yes, please.
Could you just identify your name, please?
Antonio Wiggins.
Antonio, what's the last name?
Wiggins.
Wiggins.
Antonio, do you want to come up here and take a seat? That way we can have discussion, not to put you in the hot spot or anything, it was the only seat left available, okay? So David's going to, he's our town administrator. He's going to give an overview of what we just heard, so you have an opportunity to hear it.
Okay.
And before we start, do you know, is there anybody else representing Southern Comfort coming, or are you the sole representative?
My mother's coming up to stand right now. I just shot up the stairs.
If it's okay with you, I think we should wait.
Yeah.
Sure. We'll wait for her to get here.
Sure.
Are you mom?
Mom.
All right. Are you, if I apologize, get this wrong, but it's, are you Leandre Wiggins?
I'm Audrey.
Audrey Wiggins, okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, got it, okay.
Leandre.
Yep. So to begin again, the licensing board, the staff of your licensing board, we began to notice that in the, our early part of twenty twenty-three is that Southern Comfort was no longer open for business. We have contacted them, and we received a letter from them in the middle of June saying that they had acknowledged the fact that they had been closed since February due to either some flooding or some pipes frozen or some relation to that matter. The fire department and the building inspector were both contacted, and they were to get any of that equipment replaced or fixed. Since middle of June, we have made multiple attempts in order to be able to contact the establishment, and they have been non-responsive. As a result, we required or requested a hearing to be called on August sixteenth and on August twenty-eighth. We sent notices to all parties that are on the license, including the two people in the room, and they have been non-responsive to those as well. To date, we've also asked our liquor agent Sergeant Werner to be able to go out and inspect the premise, and he confirmed that the property has been closed as well. Here is your liquor policy. So again, if we could scroll to the first highlighted area. Anybody that does hold a license, they are entitled to have fair hearing in front of this board, and that is what has been called tonight after receiving notice of the date, time, and place of which they have received, and I'm sure that's why they are here. Please, next page. We have identified in our policy as to both non-aggregious incidences and egregious incidences, and we have identified that we, over a sixty-month period of time, that there would be progressive discipline if there are multiple egregious incidences. We have also specifically identified that a closure beyond two consecutive weeks would be sufficient grounds for a revocation proceeding, which is the proceeding before the board this evening. One of the items that we specifically identified again to be egregious is unauthorized extended closure of licensed premise, which we believe to be the case. The, they are, again, they are allowed to appear before you and to be able to speak, and again, that is the purpose of this hearing. Please continue. If you do, if the board does decide that the rises to the level of an egregious incident, it is a minimum of a two-day suspension up to revocation of license. Please continue. And again, we are acting under the policy that enforces management and the employees of the establishment to fully cooperate with us whenever we make every attempt to be able to reach out to them. And again, as stated earlier, multiple attempts were made, and all of them since June sixteenth have been non-responsive. And again, specifically identified is that if there is any change in hours of operation, it must be specifically approved by the LLA. And being closed for nine months, I certainly would think would fall under that category. They, they received their license in twenty twenty-one. If we could go next, one more. Continue. Continue. So this here is, we'll go back when, this is an example of what we ask all of our licensees to sign, is acknowledgement of receipt, that they have received a copy of our alcohol policy. And if we could scroll to twenty twenty-one, which, these are the memos that were sent to them, a police report which we can review. But first, we go back. So in June of seven, twenty twenty-one, that they did sign, saying that they acknowledged the fact that they received a copy of their license. And then above and beyond, every year that they do renew their license as part of the relicensing package, the staff request them to sign, which is the next one they signed in twenty twenty-three. It's undated, but it's part of their package that came in, as part of their renewal in twenty twenty-three. Do you want to go back to the June sixteenth? So on June sixteenth? I'm sorry, go forward, forward, forward. This is our first attempt for notice was on August sixteenth, I'm sorry, I said June. But on August sixteenth, we sent an email out in my first-class mail, noticing, notifying them of tonight's hearing. And then we sent a subsequent one on August twenty-eighth as well. I included in the packet the letter that was sent from me on behalf of the board back in twenty twenty-one, where you had suspended them for two days because although they had only had their license for a handful of months, they had already at that point violated your policy for, in two items, in reference to egregious behavior, which was serving after hours and continuously having staff open and drinking after hours. So at that point, because you have a sixty-day window in your policy, you would be required to allow for progressive discipline. So our recommendation from us, unless there's some other extenuating circumstances that we're unaware of, is that the request from the office and the staff is to revoke their license.
Thank you. So do you want to talk with us about what's going on and...
Yeah, well, as far as the time left that, I'm assuming that we were supposed to get back to you guys as far as being closed out of our time. We were going back and forth with the landlord for months after months and with the insurance company because the insurance company was trying to communicate with the owner, and he wasn't trying to have the insurance company get involved with the situation because the piping was, most of the piping that kept buzzing, because that was our second time having a flood over there. The pipes were, came about being residential piping instead of commercial. So that's why I'm assuming why he didn't want the insurance company to come and see all that piping going through there. So there was a lot of work that needed to be done, and he didn't want to go to the insurance company, so he said he was going to do it. Then I think the building inspector, the fire department, everybody came down, gave him a bunch, a list of things to do. He never met the requirements to do them. So during that time, that led us to be closed, closed, because he didn't do the work. Then he told me that he did do the work. I called down to his, here to speak to Michael White, and he said that if they did do the work, they didn't come through here to get the proper permits. So I was going back and forth with the landlord, thinking that we can come to some type of agreement on getting some of the work done, or either I'll pay for it, because we really was trying to get the place back up and going. And he just was reluctant to follow up, do any of the work. And a lot of the other guys that he was trying to get to do the work, that was, were licensed people to do the work that needed to be done. They wouldn't put their stamp on it because he wasn't coming through the proper channels to get it done. He was trying to do it under the radar where he thought he can get past it. So after months and months of us going back and forth and trying to negotiate something with him, he actually wanted me to pay him substantial amount, I think it was like thirteen-five for the alleged work that he did do in there, to come in there and, because the meters got taken, everything got taken out of it. So it was hard for us to go and get reestablished. So once he, I think it was like not too long ago, maybe a couple of months, because we were trying to get the liquor license. There was a liquor license that came available, so we was telling him that they have a liquor license available for us. We're trying to get in there and get back open. We had no follow-up with him, months and months go by. Then my mother got a call from, I think Linda, that said that, I'm thinking it was the property manager came up here and said that he wasn't going to reopen it as a restaurant again. And this was just a few months ago, just us trying to go back and forth with him, trying to get some type of communication. We still haven't even got paid through the insurance company just because of the lack of communication with the landlord, the insurance company. So at this point, we was already looking at us for being closed. I mean, I know you guys are saying about revoking the license, but at this point, we was already, and I had that, we wasn't going back over there. So when we got the phone call from Linda and saying that John came up here and said that they wasn't going to reopen, we figured it was a wash. We just, no, we just, we didn't do no follow-up, so we're actually looking for another location.
Okay, so it's, I'm hearing from you, there's no plans to reopen there. You've got a lot of issues going on.
Yeah, he's not, he said he's not reopening it.
Okay. So would you rather, and I believe we can do this, David, can they surrender the license versus us revoking it?
They can.
And I think that would be better for you going forward. I, I think isn't, remember correctly, the ABC frowns upon situations when your license has been revoked?
I think the best advice I would provide is this. The distinguishment between the two is as follows. Is if we revoke the license, that will go on record, and therefore, if you attempt to secure a license anywhere else in Massachusetts, they will be able to see that as part of the file. If you choose to, to turn over your license, then there is nothing in the file because you voluntarily turned it over.
Yeah, well, I would rather, because we are, we are planning on trying to reopen, but that location between the, the communication with the landlord is just, is really not in our favor, so.
Okay. So just so you're clear, and correct me, David, you can explain this in much better legal terms, or at least closer legal. If you surrender your license and at some point you find another location in town and you want to reopen, you'll have to go through the whole process of applying for a liquor license. Okay. All right. So I'm not telling you what to do, but you've heard us both speak to it.
Yes.
Do you, is...
Yes, if it was, is there a procedure, how you go and...
No, all you would do is just bring the license up to the liquor agent, Linda and Christine, bring it up.
The actual paper.
Yep, you would bring it up and provide something in writing saying that you are voluntarily surrendering the license on that date. We will accept it, we will stamp it in, and then I will present it to you at your next board meeting, so that way it's official. What I would, is, that is going to be the course of action. I would ask the board to continue this hearing until September twentieth, because if they do not surrender the license in the meantime, then at that point, then we would vote to officially revoke it. But I do think it would be in your better interest to pursue surrendering versus allowing it to be revoked.
Yes, but I mean, like I said, from getting the phone call, I just figured it was already canceled when we got the news that the landlord himself wasn't going to open it. So if I knew it was a procedure to come back and, with, you know, what you're telling me to do now, I would have admitted it already.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming in tonight and explaining. I think this worked out better for you than the alternative. Are there any more comments on this matter, anyone in the public? No? So at this point, I'm going to call for a vote to suspend this...
No, hold on one second. Do we know, do we have any other public hearing scheduled at this point on September twentieth?
Hmm, I don't think so.
We don't have any, okay.
We're supposed to, but...
But they haven't been determined, okay. So the official motion would be to continue the meeting until September twentieth at six forty-five PM?
Okay. You do not need to attend that meeting? It's, it's just a formality at this point? Assuming you do everything you need to do with the office and surrendering?
Yeah, I'll be here tomorrow.
Okay. All right. And then, like I said, you don't have to come to this meeting. So I'm going, the next meeting. I'm going to call for a vote to continue this matter until our meeting on September twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five PM. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
I think it's Ryan, yes.
Okay, raise yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Wish you the best.
Yeah, wish you the best. Can I take a vote to close the public hearing?
No, no, because they continued.
Oh, then I don't need to close the public hearing. I love parliamentary procedure. Okay, that's easy. All right, next is the vote of, ratify Caitlin Benoit's employment as patron services assistant. Caitlin? Hi, how are you? Yeah, would you mind, or if you feel comfortable coming up here, or you can come up here too? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
So tell us what you'll be doing.
I'll be the patron services at West Bridgewater Public Library and...
And where are you coming to us from?
From New Bedford.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You've done similar things there.
Yes. I, I worked in Taunton, at the Taunton Public Library for a few years, and I just recently worked at the Secong Public Library. So I have five years of library experience to bring to the team.
Good. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Well, welcome to West Bridgewater.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to ratify Caitlin's employment contract?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Ed, let's sit down. Okay, next is a vote to ratify Tyler Maloney's employment as firefighter EMT. Tyler.
Take the hot seat.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
So I originally started as a police dispatcher in this town before I decided I would like to switch over and get my EMT and become a firefighter paramedic.
So you switched over from the police department? Didn't have anything to do with him?
No.
Oh, okay. He happened to be there, so I had to do that. And where, where do you live?
Bridgewater.
Bridgewater, okay. Close by. Well, we're excited to have you start. Do you have any questions for us?
No, not at this time.
No? Okay. Jeff, do you have any questions for Tyler?
No, I don't. I don't.
So is there a motion to ratify Tyler's employment contract as a firefighter EMT?
I will make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Christopher Palin. We have a vote to ratify Christopher Palin's employment as a firefighter EMT. And we do have fifty questions for you, so.
I'm ready.
All right. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
So I grew up in town. I've lived in town for twenty-three years, right over by Good Days on Bryant Street. I got a criminal justice degree in college, but just like Tyler, decided that I wanted to go to the fireside instead. So I made the switch.
You switched too?
Yes.
Wow.
Your O and...
No, I mean nothing. Nothing to do with that, it's a great other reason. Like to have a doc.
Yeah, and since I got my EMT, I've been through the Massachusetts Fire Academy over in Bridgewater. And currently still working on getting my paramedic.
And you're still in West Bridgewater, you said?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Still over by Good Days.
And you grew up in town?
Yep.
For you?
All life.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Once again, I don't.
Do you have any questions for us?
Not at this time.
Not that we could answer them, but I thought I'd ask. Well, welcome.
Thank you so much.
So we will vote to ratify Chris's employment as a firefighter EMT. Is there a motion?
There is.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's official.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congrats to both.
Nice to meet you, congratulations. Do you have, do you have family here with you and...
A bunch of them.
Okay, so some, so sometimes what we like to do is just suspend the meeting for like maybe five minutes, take some pictures since you came all the way from West Bridgewater.
All dressed, all dressed up.
All dressed up. So could we, what's the official wording?
Yep, just, just take, a vote to take a recess.
Okay, we're going to vote to take a five-minute recess. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in, all second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Tim, could you shut us down? Okay, we are returning back to the Board of Selectmen meeting, six forty-five. We have a public hearing for vote by mail for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, special town election. That's an opt-out option at this point. I will open the public meeting. Is there a motion to open the public meeting?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Annie Iannatelli is here with us, and she is going to talk to us about this.
Okay, so the public hearing is basically so that any, any public is here that has a reason why they want it or not want it. So if there's nobody here, I guess we can wait a few minutes and then close the public hearing, and then we can make a vote as to whether you want to opt out or stay in. Vote by mail, the reason why I'm recommending it to the board is because we have very few voters for a town, annual town election or a special town election. So if we offer vote by mail, I think it'll just cost us extra money again, and then we'll just have less people show up during the day. And I feel that it's unnecessary expense for the amount of people that go.
And if there's a situation, Annie, they're out of town, they're, they're ill. Could you explain that?
Yes, so vote by mail is just basically, if anyone can vote by mail, they don't have to have a reason. Absentee ballots is, if you're going to be out of town, or you can't make the polls due to illness or whatever religious reasons, then you can vote absentee, that's always available. This vote by mail is just for anybody that, it's kind of like unexcused absentee voting.
Okay.
And the state has made it an opt-out. So we have to opt out of it, or we have to have it.
Okay. And what's the process for absentee voting? Do you have to come up to Town Hall?
Well, you can come up and vote in person before you go away or whatever. Or you can, you can get an application on the town website and apply for an absentee ballot, and then we would mail it out. When we get the ballots, we would mail it out, and then you can mail it back or drop it back by whatever's easier.
Okay. When can, when do you request the ballot?
Well, you can request the ballot at any time now.
Okay.
Because we just keep it in a pile, you know, until it's time. The deadline to withdraw is September nineteenth, so the ballots won't be ordered until after that.
Okay.
And then as soon as the ballots come in, we would, any applications that we have, we would then mail them out.
Okay.
As soon as they came in.
All right.
Or you could come down and do it during the regular hours of Town Hall, vote in person. So.
No, I, I think to that point, I mean, that those two choices, right, absentee ballot, vote in person, I mean, you know, the actual election is more than enough options, and to, I'm all for opting out. You know?
It's local, it's a local election. There are reasonable options. There's plenty of time. So I'm in favor of opting out too.
So I'll make a motion.
Well, you have to...
We have to close the public hearing, yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, is there a motion for a vote to opt out?
Yes, I'll make that motion to opt out.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor, and this is a roll call vote?
Ryan, yes.
Raise yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you have a vote form somewhere inside. Just send it out.
Yep, it's in here.
We'll get that to you after it's signed. Okay, next on the agenda, under warrants, Board of Selectmen Business, we have a discussion on possible vote on proposed election hours for the special town election on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. You wanted to talk with us about that?
Yes, I'm looking to see if we can possibly shorten the hours because we have a ballot with one race on it. Our normal hours for a town election is nine AM to eight PM. And I'm looking to shorten that from ten AM to six PM just because I feel like it's going to be a very long day with not a huge turnout due to the fact that it's only one, one race on it. And so I'm looking to see if you guys are willing to shorten the day.
Did you say ten to six or ten to five? The letter says ten to five.
Ten to five, I'm sorry, ten to five.
Okay.
My mistake, yeah.
All right. How many poll workers do you typically have there? Or do you have to have there?
So we don't have to have a checkout table anymore, so that only cuts us down by one.
Okay.
So usually we have four, we have two check-ins, two check-outs. Then we have a clerk and we have a warden. And without a checkout table, we can cut it down by one. So that would be, that would be five per precinct.
So you have ten?
Yeah.
Do you have to have ten people there, all those hours?
Yeah.
And what percent of the town typically votes, or a percent of registered voters?
Well, I have, I brought that with me, so. It depends on what's on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
But it can run anywhere from, I, I've tracked it since... But, um, it can run anywhere from, I, I've tracked it since two thousand and sixteen and it runs anywhere from twenty-three percent down to five point eight seven percent. Depending on, um, what, what races are contested or not. So, I mean, I have it handout if you want to look at it.
I, I trust your judgment. That's what you put together in your judgment, so.
Yeah, so it's a very small amount of people, um, and I also have the hours, you know, how many votes per hour. And it increases in the middle of the day and then it decreases down towards the end of the day with new stragglers that come in. And I think if we, if we do this with enough notice, we can get it out there, we'll get it out to the, to the, um, candidates. So they can get it out to their people and then we can get it out on the website, on social media and everything to let them know that, um, we're shorting the hours for this, this particular election.
So anyone who's working that day, say, and they get out of work at six o'clock, they could have, um, contacted you to vote by absentee ballot.
Exactly.
So that, there's other options. As long as we have good advance notice.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it's something they can put up at the sign at the dump, right, on the flushing sign?
Yeah, yeah.
So that everyone's aware ahead of time this is a little different. And we can put it on the Facebook page and we can put it on the towns page and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my only, I don't know if it's a concern, I'm not, I'm not dead set against this by any means. Um, it's just, I, I go back to the standard kind of nine to five thing and, and do we, do we lock somebody out from voting if they work on it? I know it's a Saturday, but if they work on a Saturday, um, people getting out of work.
That's the other thing. See, this is my suggestion, but I mean, that it's whatever you decide you want to do within, because right now it's, it's eight AM to eight PM. If you feel that ten to five is too short, you want to do it nine to five, or you feel like you just want to keep, it's totally up to you. I'm just making the suggestion.
Yeah, I'm thinking ten to six. And it's just in my head, people get out of work at five and I don't know, I mean, that's traditional. I don't know how much is, is left of traditional work anymore. Um, but it would just give somebody time to get here after work or, or get there after work. Um, but I don't know what your numbers say to that, um, in terms of voting by hour, but.
It's, you know, it's totally up to what you guys think is appropriate as far as what you want. Those are my suggestions for hours. Um, if you're comfortable with, I mean, it's regularly open, we regularly open at nine AM, so people are used to that. So if you'd rather do nine to five, um, for people that are adjusting for work, or if you want to do, whatever you feel, I'll do, so. I'm just thinking this is extra cost that we didn't anticipate having.
Sure.
And now we're going to have to run an election that's going to cost us some money. And so to have people sitting around all day long for one or two voters to come in, if we get it out ahead of time and we let people know that, um, we're shortening the hours that they, you know, can make adjustments for it. But then again, if you want to, we'll just keep it.
Could you also, it, it, based on whatever we vote, could you contact the two candidates that are running?
I would. I would definitely contact them and let them know the hours so they could get that out to their voters, um, and let them know the hours.
Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm, don't really have any strong feelings about whether it's ten to five or ten to six, but I agree with Annie that it is a bit expensive to have people there, the customary hours for a local election. I mean, if, I will.
And if, and if we shorten it to like six o'clock, five o'clock, I don't have to offer dinner, which then cuts out on the cost. I'd only have to offer lunch for my workers. I mean, it's just a lot going into it, but if, whatever you want, whatever you feel is comfortable, we'll do.
And you could just get them a snack instead of lunch. They're not going to be there much longer, so. Whatever you do, you do. Um, anyway, the way I feel about it, I, I would agree to do this. And if, um, forty percent of the town shows up to vote, then I will, I would never do this again, but again, that's my thing. If forty percent of the people show up, registered voters show up to vote for this, and that will show there's a strong demand for vote. But at, would you say five to twenty-three percent? I bet you the twenty-three, well, twenty-three percent was probably a presidential election.
No, this is town, town election.
Those are only local?
The twenty-three percent was back in two thousand and eighteen when we had four, uh, people running for Board of Selectmen with no incumbent.
We'll see how that turns out.
And we had assessors that was contested and then we had three non-binding questions for.
Four people ran for selectmen that year?
Four people ran.
Who ran?
Oh, I don't know.
I think Denise does.
It was me.
But there was no, there was no incumbent. So there was four people and then there was a contested assessors race. And then there were the three non-binding questions that we had about, I think it was about marijuana.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
And so at that point, we had, um, eleven hundred and twenty-three people vote, which was twenty-three percent.
I remember that year very well.
Yeah.
It's burnt into my brains. Yeah, that was the, I was one.
Was that the year you?
Yes, it was. Okay, so is there any more discussion? Are we done discussing this?
I think, well, just, I, I know we said we can get it on the dump. Uh, we can do that sooner than later, just, just because of the shortened time. I think if we give people notice, make them understand that there's absentee ballots, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, we can't fit all of that onto the.
Sign, no?
The dust, no.
We could, we could put it on the dumpsters.
But we can get it out there. I mean, we can, you know, we can.
Yep.
Figure out ways to get it out there.
Even if it flashes, you know, change of time for the special election, see town, direct them, see town website for more information.
Yep.
And direct them to the website.
Right.
And as long as there's, there's notice out there, um, and, and different modes of communication. Plus, I think we can count on the two candidates that are running, two.
I would think so.
I would think they'd want to make sure all their voters know about it. Okay, is there a motion?
I don't know if you're, sorry, I don't know if maybe you're more comfortable than keeping it currently open at nine because that's who we usually deal with.
Uh, at this point, I'm just going to call for a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so Jeff, do you have a motion?
I do. Um, we'll, we'll go with this. Um, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we adjust the hours for the special town meeting on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, uh, from two ten to five PM.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So you have a, they put a sign for that as well and you also have the warranty. You have to write in the hours that you voted on.
Okay, we'll get that signed and dated and out to you.
We'll leave that here tonight.
Yep, and if, and if I can get that posted right away too, that will also get out there sooner as other people will know.
Okay, so it's on us, so let's make sure she has it by tomorrow morning.
I'll, I'll slide it under your door on the way out.
Okay. No, last time I did that, they threw some, the cleaners threw something out.
Oh, they did. Do it on the counter, not on the.
Okay.
Just couldn't get it.
Oh, I can get it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the vote to sign the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three special town election warrant.
Make that, oop, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's what it is. You'll see, we'll fill in the dates for you and, I mean, we'll fill in the times for you as you just explained.
Okay.
Um, so you can just take a motion to approve the warrant as presented with those, with those changes.
The warrant we have here, there's an incorrect date on the packet, but the warrant here has the correct date for the election, so.
It's been corrected in our packet, but what's on the screen has the incorrect date. It's April eighth.
Oh, so.
So that.
Do you have the correct one?
Yeah, we, I, we caught it before the meeting started, so.
It says October twenty-first?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that has been corrected. Uh, we need to.
Make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To sign the, uh, special town election warrant.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is a vote to set the special town meeting, date of October sixteenth at six o'clock. So we have a vote to open the special town meeting?
Yep, so what I would do is it would actually be three separate motions.
Oh.
One would be to vote to set a special town meeting for October sixteenth at six PM. And it really should also state in the motion at the middle senior high school. Um, as you know, this, the primary purpose of calling this is for a feasibility study to build a new school.
Okay, so, well, I'll restate that again. We have votes set the special town meeting date for October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three at the middle senior high school. Is there a motion?
At six PM.
At six PM. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a vote to open the special town meeting warrant. Is there a motion?
There is, so moved.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, just for explanation for anyone who's listening to this, this is to allow warrants to be requested. We anticipate that there will be two warrants, if I'm correct, school feasibility study. And also the water department will likely have.
Yes.
A warrant on there as well?
Yes.
Okay. But the warrant is still open, so any other departments that may have something that merits being on this town meeting can be presented?
Correct, because I'm going to make a recommendation that you set a close date for Tuesday, September nineteenth at not, at noon. So that means that anybody else that would like to propose any type of motion for it to be placed on the special town meeting warrant, that is the period of time from tonight until, assuming that approval, till Tuesday, September nineteenth at noon. Of which time your meeting on September twentieth, you will then vote whether to place those requests onto the special town meeting warrant at that time.
So the department heads notified?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have, we have an internal process for notification.
Okay, good.
And I think the only other thing worthy of mentioning, Denise, is, um, as you said, for people watching, the, uh, School Building Authority Committee will be, um, holding a public hearing.
That is correct.
I believe it's on September eighteenth.
It's either the eighteenth or the nineteenth. There seems to be some confusion on that date.
Okay. Um, but, uh, somebody's looking for it. They'll, it's out there and can be found. Um, at which point they'll be talking about the school and the process prior to the, uh, the request for the vote.
I think I saw a Facebook group's been formed and it's starting to, uh, provide information. Okay, so do we have a motion to set the close date for the special town meeting warrant on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three at noon?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have a proclamation for Jace Russell. Last Friday, there was an event at, um, Hollow the Moon, I think it's called, at Patriot Place.
Yep.
And for the early afternoon hours, they had, uh, refreshments and, and lunch set out. And Jace and anyone else who came, a lot of his friends came and they went bowling and they had games. And then later in the evening, they had, um, more food and a live band and other entertainment set up. Uh, I did attend in the early afternoon and read the proclamation. I'll read it again tonight. And then later on in the evening, Jeff attended as well and spent some time there with Jace's family and folks from town. So the, the proclamation of the Board of Selectmen, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, whereas Jace Russell was born on December third, twenty-sixteen, to Josh and Danielle Russell of West Bridgewater. And whereas Jace's love of trains spawned the Jace Train movement to raise awareness for neuroblastoma. And whereas Jace ran a lemonade stand that raised six thousand dollars that was donated to Tommy's Place, a nonprofit organization that provides magical vacation homes located in Falmouth and Centreville, Mass for children battling cancer. And whereas Jace, as the engineer of the Jace Train, is a very brave warrior, therefore be it. Resolved, we the Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater do hereby proclaim September first, twenty-twenty-three as Jace Russell Day. In recognition of Jace Russell and his brave battle with cancer and his efforts with the Jace Train. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of West Bridgewater to be affixed this first day of September, twenty-twenty-three, the Board of Selectmen, Denise Reyes Chairman and Jeff Ryan, Vice Chairman. I, I don't think there's anyone in town that doesn't know about Jace, the Jace Train and Jace. He's just a precious boy and there, and Danielle, Josh and Jace are just a phenomenal family.
That's, you know, that was clear. There's obviously a lot of love at that event and, uh, you know, a lot of compassion and, and a lot of great people there. And I would just, you know, to add, just say thank you to, um, that event. There was a lot of, lot of, lot of, um, fundraising that took place, a lot of gifts given and things along those lines, so. It, uh, it reminds us why this community, and in this case, the Bridgewater community was, was part of that as well. Um, but it really speaks to a, a great community, a great place to live and really want to say thank you. There were three or four people that clearly did a lot of work to put that together. And, uh, it was a good event.
I don't want to slate anyone, but I know the Glidden family took charge and did a lot of work and Nancy, Nancy Maloney was heavily involved in it as well. Uh, I, I'm not sure of the others' names, so I don't mean to slate anyone, but I also thank the Lions Club, do, made a sizable donation, was it five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars, yep.
So it was a great event and a great cause. Okay, uh, next we have a, to review a request from Borderline Liquors for pledge of inventory. Uh, Jeff, I believe you have a disclosure to make?
Yes, um, my company does business with Borderline Liquors. Um, so as a result, uh, for this meeting, we mentioned it at the last meeting, but we will need to invoke the rule of necessity, uh, being that there's just two of us present. Yeah, or two members of the board currently, so.
Yeah, so just for pu- public disclosure, um, their attorney was here at their last meeting. Um, at that point, I was unaware that we would have to invoke the rule of necessity, so we didn't place it on the agenda. So this gave Jeff the opportunity to make the disclosure to the public that in ideal world, you would not be voting on this. Um, and, um, and that you would, but unfortunately, because business does have to be conducted and we only have two board members. The state legislature has, uh, recognized this to be an issue and therefore has allowed this, called the rule of necessity by statute, to be invoked. So with that said, you've made your disclosure. Um, seeing the fact that no business couldn't be done without your vote, I would ask the board to take a vote to invoke the rule of necessity, which does recall, that require a roll call vote.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to invoke the rule of necessity.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in fa- uh, all in favor?
Ryan, yes.
Raise, yes. They were official. And we have the discussion now?
Yes, now you can, now you can discuss it and vote your pleasure.
Okay, so you want to give us, is anyone here for this matter? No?
No, the attorney was here last time. Um, he identified as basically just a pretty straightforward procedural process. They're looking to receive a loan of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Rockland Trust. And as part of the collateral of that loan, uh, they are looking to pledge, use the license, their liquor license as a collateral towards that pledge.
Any questions?
No, no.
So I'd call for a vote to be updated pledge of inventory for Borderline Liquors. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so David, I'd like us to look at this policy, well, what we're doing with liquor license and set on the next agenda to have a discussion about the process, the policy and how we, how or if we should be doing it going forward. Uh, I think just putting it on the agenda for next time, because we didn't set on here that we were going to have a discussion about it. Uh, at this point, I'd like it just to be on the agenda and.
We'll make sure it is.
Okay, and then we can talk in the meantime about, uh, the whole process and what it entails and complications if there are any. Okay, next is a vote to approve the application for a one-day liquor license and one-day Sunday entertainment license for the Lions Club at Park Day at War Memorial Park, September tenth. And whether we will vote to waive the town fees for Park Day. Is there a mo- uh, is there any discussion? No?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, well, there's two motions, right? First would be for the entertainment and then the second for the fees?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's technically three, but you can wrap it up because it is a one-day liquor license, it is a one-day entertainment license, it is a vote to waive the town fees. Um, just again for public disclosure, uh, and especially with Jeff as a new member of the board. We do do this every single year, uh, Park Day. We do do this every single year. Uh, Park Day, I honestly think is just, it's just a fantastic event, right? And I think it's the, it epitomizes what this town is all about. Uh, the fact that six to seven hundred people come out, uh, it's a fantastic day. Jerry Lawrence from the Lions basically does most of the work, uh, not to say the other Lions members don't, but he does a lot of it. Um, just does an excellent job on behalf of the town. And I know other members of the Lions Association as well. Um, you know, Anthony was always a member. He did a lot of work, Paula Bunker. But just the fact that to get six or seven hundred people in town to come out and have fun every single year is really fantastic. And the police and the fire department are there, and, and, um, so that's why we do do this every single year.
Thank you. Okay, so first, there's a vote to approve the application for the one-day liquor license. Excuse me, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a vote for the one-day Sunday entertainment license for Lions Club Park Day. Is there a mo- uh, is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And third, there's a vote to waive the town fees for Park Day. Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is vote to amend town filming policy to include a hundred dollar per day fee.
Yeah, so we put this policy together, and we've always, by act and by past practice, have charged a hundred dollars per day, perf- uh, per day. Um, however, we recognize that we never actually, it was captured as part of what the discussion was, but it wasn't captured actually in the policy. So, uh, we caught it, so I would ask the board to take a vote to formally amend its policy to include one hundred dollars per day for fee.
Just for clarification, this is in addition to any fees that might be associated for a police detail or?
That was correct.
Okay.
You make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept the meeting minutes of July twelfth and August second, twenty-twenty-three for review. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Uh, we, first, we have a vote to petition civil service, permanent and interme- intermittent police officer list. David, do you wanna just-
Sure, so the police chief, um, so we're gonna have some retirements in the force, so this is not looking to add staff. This is to looking to replace as people retire. And again, the chief, as he always is, is being proactive, because they haven't put in their retirement yet, but we know that they are forthcoming. So we are currently still a member of civil service. You may recall that as part of our union negotiations, the police department has voluntarily chosen to, uh, leave pub-, uh, civil service, which I do think is gonna be really better for the town, make life easier for us and recruitment purposes. But until town meeting takes that vote, we are still subservient to civil so, service rules and regulations. So right now, what the chief is looking to do is to create a part-time list in preparation for eventually a hiring a full-time officer or officers, depending on how people, how many people retire. So it does require two votes. We can handle it as one if you would like, but the motion could be, uh, to request from petition, uh, request, uh, from civil service, a P I, uh, list, and also a full-time police officer list.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is going, vote to appoint Chris Trudell to the Complete Streets Committee. You're Chris.
Yes.
Hey, Chris, how are you?
Have you enjoyed the meeting tonight, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah. It's been en- entertaining, hasn't it? Um, so, Chris, you're going to join Complete Streets. That's great. That's been a s- a source of funding for us. I'm not, I, I wouldn't say two hundred thousand dollars roughly? Yet a year, or at least every few years, I think there's been quite a bit of money received.
So the, so, so the, right, so the original purpose of the Complete Streets is to make suggestions and recommendations as to what we do with sidewalks moving forward. So we're currently in the process of fulfilling what the committee had voted on in the past. And then once we completed, finalized that, then this group would re-meet to set to refocus on what moving forward would be for sidewalks and any other items that might be associated with that. We have funded about a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars of town money every year. Although this past year, we also did secure a half a million dollar grant as well, um, towards the project, so. And I also wanna commend Chris, 'cause Chris is the gentleman that contacted our office a handful of months ago and made the recommendation that we lower the speeds on Matfield Street. Um, and he put together a pretty nice packet that was compelling, and this board did vote to approve that at your last meeting.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'd like to make the motion to appoint Chris to the Complete Streets.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. Best wishes.
Mia's in the back.
Huh?
The next person's in the back.
Okay, Mia's next. All right, we have a vote to appoint Mia Pachico to the cultural council. Hi, Mia, how are you?
Doing well, yourself?
Doing well. You wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, well, yes, first, I apologize for my tardiness. I actually went to the cultural committee meeting at the library, that's why. A little late, I was over at the house.
You're working already, so, yeah, so.
Yes, already. Um, I am currently a, um, an instructional assistant at the Howard School in the fourth grade. Um, changed careers from technology to that post-COVID, and I decided I love it, uh, love working with kids. Um, and I joined the Lions Club. I, it's where I actually met Jeff. Um, so I'm also into learning as well. Um, and I just, yeah, like, I love working with the kids in the community. I'm new to the town. I've never lived anywhere. We actually had roots.
Yeah.
My husband and I bought our house here, and we've been here six years, and I love that I can get to know the children of the community, the older people in the community, and I'm very social, so it's, it's, it feeds me just as much as a, as I will hopefully the others.
Good for you. Good for you. Well, thank you for volunteering and everything you're doing. That's awesome.
Thank you. How's your arm?
It's still working. It's healing.
Do I ask? No, but they're not.
I sure do wear a sidewalk. All my weekly appointments.
Oh, no. Yeah, could you get to work on that, Chris, side to the re-
Oh, no, not here.
Oh.
Not patrickly, so.
Yeah, we, we don't have to.
Oh.
It was my own fault, so.
Okay. Was it last Saturday?
It was August third.
Oh, okay. Well, hope it heals well and quickly.
The kids are treating you okay.
I'm so glad it wasn't one of our sidewalks.
Of course, there was a sidewalk near my house. Just that, where I don't have to go back to.
Well, please feel free to talk to Chris about that after the meeting.
Let me introduce you to Chris, yes. All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mia to the cultural council and get back on track.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next we have a vote to appoint Pamela Anderson Livingston to the A D A committee. I don't believe Pamela is here tonight. Um, okay, so.
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please send a letter to Pamela with our thanks. Okay. Uh, vote to appoint Marcy Lee to the mobile home rent control board. So Marcy is here. I will make a disclosure that, uh, Marcy works for me. I've made this disclosure before when it's been any type of position, or there's only one, that involved any type of compensation. This is a complete volunteer, non-compens- compensa- uh, can't say that, compensatory position. We brought it up at our meeting, was that two or three weeks ago?
Yep.
That we needed volunteers. We made a public request at that point for, you know, appeal, rather I should say, to the audience to volunteer, and no one volunteered. So.
I want to.
Well, I, you volunteered, you volun- you volunteered that moment when you found out there was an opening at the meeting, but we wanted to postpone it, give the public a chance to, uh, send a letter in and offer to volunteer, but unfortunately, we didn't get any volunteers. So, any discussion?
Nope, not for me.
Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Marcy Lee to the, uh, mobile home rent control board.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, vote to accept Walter Thayer's resignation from the Z B A.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you please send him a letter, uh, thanks for the service? Okay, correspondence from the public to determine the course of action. We have not received any correspondence to determine the course of action. So. Well, now, we'll put it up for public comment period.
And that would be any of you three.
Do you have a comment?
Hi.
Hi. Any other comments? Marcy, wanna volunteer for anything else?
Yeah.
No comments? Okay, all right, we'll move on to the town administrators' report.
Yes, we have a lot going on, but what I listen to here just really is a bunch of F Y I's. Um, one is, is that final state aid reports have final, been finalized. They're finalized on August ninth. I always point this out because I think it's kind of funny, because they are statutally required to pass a budget by June, and, um, and they can't stick to their own laws and rules. But in any event, um, the real notice to the board is that within a couple of dollars, and when I say a couple of dollars, I really mean like twenty-four dollars out of nine million dollars, um, everything stayed the same from our budget season. So, um, so that's all good news. And the last two F Y I's is really because I just wanna commend a couple of employees. Uh, one is, is that we sold, uh, at public auction, municipal auction, we sold two of our generators, one that came out of the school department and one that came out of the D P W department. You may recall that over the last two town meetings, we went to town meeting and purchased or got, received approval from town meeting to purchase generators at both places. And we were only going to receive about a thousand dollars in trade-in for both. Um, in credit to Linda, um, she placed them on auction, and we actually ended up generating six thousand dollars of additional revenue. So, you know, good, good to her. And the other is, is that, um, our fish ladder at War Memorial Park, unfortunately, has not been working for a handful of years. Uh, Mass Wildlife Management has been notified, they're, they're aware of and, and informed as of such. It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace, and we just didn't have the money. Um, and you may recall that I had petitioned the board last year to repurpose some of our staffing. So we always had two and a half secretaries, and now we have three secretaries. We're gonna do our best to have two secretaries in, in, um, uh, inspectional services, and we converted one secretary into a grant writer, hired her, and she secured a two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar grant specifically for this purpose. So, one, I want to inform the board, because that's excellent news. We can now get that done. Mass Wildlife will be happy. Two, is that it shows that when we have the people in the right place doing their jobs, and they're doing, Laurie's doing a really good job. You know, nobody likes to spend money and labor, right? But if you're gonna spend forty or fifty thousand dollars in labor to generate this type of a grant, then that's obviously money well spent. And this isn't our only one. She's done an excellent job in some of the other grants as well. So I really want the public to know that we do everything that we can in reference to whether it's the generators or the grants, to do whatever we can to either save the town money or make the money. And so just providing it to the board for, for your, um, F Y I. And that, for this evening, that's it.
Okay.
Please thank Linda and Laura for us.
Will do.
Absolutely. Now, is Laurie doing all the grants, David?
So it's Laurie and the tutelage of Tracy.
Okay.
Um, and they both just, they work very well together. Um, and so at the end of the year, we will provide the board a full disclosure, because I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised with the amount of grants we've been able to secure out of that office.
Okay, and are they writing the grants for all the departments, or are they focusing on particular departments?
What we are looking to do, uh, what I've, um, directed them to do is to secure grants that we have not secured in the past.
Okay.
So we already, you know, Chris does a really good job in the D P W department. He has been able to secure grants year after year that he is specialized in. The same thing with Vic as police chief and Lincoln as, uh, fire chief. And they will continue to work on those grants. They know what they're doing, they're specialized in those areas. These are grants that we never had the opportunity to be able to chase before. Um, so this is additional revenue that the town is seeing.
Yeah, so she's more than paid her salary for a few years at that.
I'd love to make a comment about grants, 'cause it's so relevant right now. Laurie did just submit, on behalf of the A D A committee, three grant applications to, uh, the M O D for grants for projects and towns. So we have three project grants that have been submitted, and fingers crossed, a year back, that we've gotten some of those in December. So she has been valuable. She has been amazing to work with too in the grant writing process, so.
Super.
Really, really appreciate hiring her.
I mean, she's doing a great job, and the, these are, like you said, these are grants we've wanted to apply for, but.
Correct. These, this is incremental revenue that we did not have before, including the fact that, as our esteemed A D A coordinator stated. Um, but we have always, there's always been A D A grants out there. We just didn't have the ability to be able to go after them, 'cause it is a lot of work. It is a lot of documentation. And now we have somebody who, she had the experience beforehand. She comes to us with that knowledge and expertise, and she's putting it to good use.
Some of these things that we're using this funding for are projects we were, I think, eventually going to get more pressure on from whatever, what regulation it might be to get it done. And without these grants, it would be coming from taxpayer pockets.
Correct.
All right, so is there a, Jeff, did you have anything to add or anything you wanted to say, or?
No, I think you, I, you know, covered it well, both David and you, on as far as the grants go. It's outstanding, so.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
I would love to make that motion.
I will gladly second it. All in, all-
Can you do it? Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.